Hi, can we please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Before we get started tonight, for those of us that could not make the wake tonight, I'd like to just take a brief moment of silence for Tony Moretti, student of this district and staff member. Thank you very much. Joe, we have some exemplary people here.
We do. We have some folks with us. I know a lot of people couldn't make it tonight, but I did want to send our heartfelt thanks and ask those folks to stand up in a second when I call on them. This was the first year since, I think it was 2019, that we were able to do the Da Vinci Festival again. It was pretty much the highlight of my year so far. It was really, it was a great experience. It was just, you know, the building was abuzz with community members, students, kids so proud of their artwork, and, you know, so many community members that were just inspired and awed by the talent of our students, whether it was in the arts, career in technology education, music, everything, photography, robotics. It was a really, it was a great day. So I know a lot of people put a ton of time into this. I do want to recognize them. So if they're here from our music department, I know Mike Ansis is at an MMPA meeting. He just came in to tell me. I know some of our music folks are there. But I think we have a couple of folks with us here. James Betancourt, Mark Bellata is here. Mark? And Lisa Holman, who's at the meeting as well, from our CTE department, Career and Technology Education at both the middle school and high school. Big thanks to Joe Carino, Mike Sercone, Nancy DePietro, Bill McDonough, Nick Nattalino, and I think Mike Demcek is back there. Mike, thank you. Then the folks that start planning this on like August 31st and are here until midnight, stealing their husbands for the night, making them work all night, and their two little children. All of our art teachers, so Kathleen Nunez, Monica Gagnon, Dana Moranek, Megan Anderson. And with us tonight are John Biazzi, Chrissy Scarpatti, and Jen Silva. Thank you all very much. Put so much time into this. I did want to thank our maintenance staff. We sent them a thank you. They do, there's a ton of setup, a ton of cleanup for it. Dan Krosick, Justin Perkins, Kevin Velden, Mike Samuelman. I do want to give a special shout out to Horacio Coedo from Sodexo. Our culinary arts teacher could not make it this year. She helped prepare the food. Horacio volunteered his time to come in and help distribute the food to people. So Horacio, thank you very much. And Mr. Ian Lowell, who took on a new role this year as the instructional leader for the fine and performing arts. Mark Shores is in with us tonight. And then finally, Mike Crowley for all of his work. Mike helped bring the whole thing together and bring back the Da Vinci. So thank you so much. I can't wait for next year. It was awesome. It was great to see everyone again and look the most normal I've felt in a long time. So it was great.
Hey, Joe, you're gonna have to wait another year.
Two years.
Two years.
Every other year.
Every other year, sorry. I don't know. I had so much fun this year.
I'd like to echo all of that. It was great to see it back. I came Friday afternoon, walked around with Joe and grabbed some appetizers and listened to the band play, and it was great. I'm always impressed by the talent of everyone, right from K all the way up. And Joe and I walked the whole building. We had the robots going. The energy in the building was just fantastic, and it was just, yeah, it was just such a great thing. So thank you, everybody, and staff and students that put it all together, and I'm looking forward to the next one. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here for public participation at all? Anyone here to speak?
And the Da Vinci folks, you may leave. You're more than welcome to stay for the board meeting, but don't feel like you have to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none for public participation. We're gonna move forward with the report of the chairman. And Joe, we have a couple of people we'd like to recognize.
We do. We have Allison Olliar and Eric Unger with us tonight. I want to congratulate and thank both of them. Yep.
Come on up here.
Unfortunately, Ellie DeGeorge and Adrian Silvestro couldn't be with us tonight, but it's usually at this meeting every year that we thank you all for your service. And Eric, you'll come back next year?
Good, good, good. Take a little picture.
Thank you. Appreciate all your work. Thank you. Don't go far.
So Eric's back with us next year, and Ellie, you're off to...
Where?
Be a Seminole, right?
Yeah.
All right. Florida State.
Nice.
Okay, so thank you very much, all the student reps, for your reports and the work that you do representing the students to this board. I'm gonna move forward on the consent agenda. Number one is the approval of minutes, and I verified this with Dennis. I'd like to put in a correction under unfinished business, A policies, second review. The discussion from Dennis should be moved up one to his motion to make the amends. The reimbursement will be set at the current year's IRS reimbursement rate. So, because Dennis made that comment under that motion, we corrected it, and then we voted for all of them, so.
Thank you, Dave.
Do you have that, Diane? You got it?
Yep. That's what I have on the minutes. Anyone else have any questions, comments on the minutes? No? That's good. Any questions on the wires or warrants? No, moving on.
Hold on, Dave, sorry. The just one is the usual comment on the, it's up to read. 38699, the first one, 51. It's the Connecticut Department of, fill in the blank.
Labor.
Education. Labor, okay, thank you.
Is that the 731?
Yep. Thank you. Just doesn't show up on the, on the printout. And the second one was more of a question for process. On the psychological services, we have a trend. I know, obviously, it's a new line item, 9909. But I want to know, how's that compared to last year, if you can get it? Because obviously, you know, we're all concerned, and I want to make sure we're doing the right thing. It's under the paid warrant, you know.
Yeah, which?
Warrant, SO 50323, page 2, I believe, in the middle, 9909, Polaris, Psychological Services. Nope.
Specialty.
Is that testing?
Never mind. We're good. Asked and answered. Never mind, Ron.
Jen, isn't that the line that you have been telling us about every month going up here? That's what I thought.
Let me see, I'll check it last year.
So, Ron, you want to just let us know?
Yeah, I was gonna, Jen, what's the?
141913, can I help you?
14...
3913. I think it's the second one on the paid warrants. Left, right, and 9909 is the left.
Yeah, it's not, I'm not seeing it on page 2, so.
Oh, maybe it's further down.
Might be page 2 in our packet, which might be different than what's in front of you.
We don't have to get into details, Jen.
Dennis, your question is?
I was gonna say, I could look it up right now, I just.
That's right.
Okay.
Please, don't be coming. Thank you.
Okay, so if I can find that now.
It's on page 11 on the warrant, yeah.
But your question is, how is it trending compared to last year?
Yeah, right.
Page 11, that's the wire?
Not the 11 of the warrant.
Thanks.
So that's my outside agency line, sorry, I finally found it. So I can't really speak too much about this, but I could just say that anything in that area, any psychologicals, anything like that, is definitely trending up from last year, for sure. I can get you the exact numbers if you want, but it's...
Later, we can take that off. Yeah, thanks.
What is it, 9909, Polaris? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it goes alphabetical on the warrant.
So Dennis, as soon as he gets that, we'll let you know, right? Okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know when I...
Okay, thank you. Item C under the consent agenda, review and approval of budget transfers. There will be no vote on that. You can cross that off because both of those are well within our threshold. Are there any questions on that? They're both from Massey, $1,400 and $1,200, so no questions on that. Joe, you want to talk about our appointments?
I just, you know, I want to thank, first of all, the principals, the teams, HR, Sheila and her folks for onboarding people. Most of these are all the positions that were, became vacant this year due to retirement. So we try to get a real early start to get, you know, the best candidates we can. So we got started really early, and, you know, we're really excited to have these folks joining us. A lot of folks at Vaughn Hollow, we had a couple of special education retirements there. Chris Boozy coming in at 4th grade, Megan Cowick, Megan Hein. Chris Boozy and Megan Hein are both former Massey students, so we're excited to have them both back. Janine Martin, Special Ed at Stepney, Kristen Rosati, our new reading interventionist at Monroe Elementary, and Jessica Todd, who will be a Spanish teacher here for resignation. So we're really excited to get going on this now and get ahead of the game as quick as possible.
And you'll have more for next month?
We will have more for next month, and then, as is usually the tradition, I'll bring them all to the first meeting in September to, for everybody to put a name on the face.
Right. I think it's a compliment that not only do our students want to go into teaching, but that they want to come back and work for the district. So that's always nice to hear. And Joe, how are we trending with that? Are we able to fill positions?
We've been able to fill, certified positions, we've been able to fill.
Okay.
The non-certified has been tricky. Perez is, and I know it's difficult everywhere, but certified staff, we've been, we've been doing a really good job.
That's good. Go ahead, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, so year-to-date actuals, the budget's 696, year-to-date actual 410. There's 171 available. I'm sorry, 171 in encumbrances, 115 available.
Dennis, you good?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay.
There are others though.
All right.
Good.
Nope. Thanks for looking that up now, Ron. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We're gonna move forward with the reports of the committees, starting with our student representatives. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Board of Ed. We hope you're having a marvelous Monday. There's so much going on during this lovely time of the school year, but first, sports. Boys Lacrosse is playing in their last regular season game tonight at home against Weston. They've played a great season and hopefully score another win tonight. Girls Lacrosse and softball both had their senior days on Saturday. Lacrosse won against St. Joe's 14-4, including junior Lily Cameron securing her 100th career goal. Softball also won their senior day game against NFA. Congrats to all the seniors. Boys Lacrosse also had a great senior night on Thursday and are playing their opposites of girls lacrosse, who are at Weston tonight. They're playing home tonight against Weston. They've played a great season and hopefully score another win tonight. Boys volleyball had their senior night the same as boys lacrosse and did very well against Brookfield. Can't wait to see what more they have in them. The baseball team also had a great win against Pomprog, winning 9-3. Track has a meet going on right now. It's the last one before SWCs, so let's hope they're doing as well as we know they can. Tennis just came back from a match, and it's good news with the boys' 4-3 win against Pomprog. And a special bonus this week is a limited edition sports update, Powderpuff. Compiled of about 18 girls each, the black and red teams had girls that showed up ready to fight and have a great game. The stands were filled with excitement when in overtime, the red team won. Spring is nearing summer, so the sports are coming to an end, but there's still loads of excitement for what's to come, such as dance team and cheer tryouts happening this week.
Today's spring fling was an incredible success. Students were happy to participate in a great number of activities, from inflatables in the gymnasium to a dunk tank, grilling station, con candy machine, and much more outdoors. Thank you to all the faculty who volunteered their time to make this event possible. This Wednesday, Massey will be hosting the Second Annual Cultural Fair. Cuisines from around the world will be available during lunch waves, and numerous other activities will be made available during flex in order to celebrate everybody's unique culture. Finally, class elections for next year's student government have begun. Candidates who have decided to run for office for the 2023 to 2024 school year have been invited to create a short election campaign video, which will be due Friday, May 19, while voting will be held on May 26. Best of luck to all candidates. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me, I'd like to report that the Health and Safety Committee met on Thursday, May 11 via Zoom. Was a very good discussion, and drills are being done. I'm happy about that. And also, the reunification training, very encouraging, and continue that good work. Anybody else have any committee reports?
I went to CES.
Yay! Tell us about it.
So it was my first meeting that they adopted their budget. So they're a little, a little higher due to some capital projects. I think they're building a new building. As I said, it was my first meeting, so I was just kind of catching up. And we did, you know, the superintendent's evaluation, and they are losing their Director of Professional Learning. So they'll post it for that.
Okay.
It was great to be there.
Good, and thank you.
And have Monroe represented.
Yes, it's important, so thank you. Anyone else committee reports? No? Okay, then we're gonna move forward to the report of the superintendent. Go ahead, Joe.
Good thing. We'll start with the fund activity statement. I don't know. Anyone have any questions for Ron, or if you want to address anything in particular?
Okay, so the fund activity statement in your packet is as of April 30. Nothing, no real updates from last month. We're still trending well for the fiscal year. You know, I'm projecting, you know, I think, I think it was somewhere around a, I can't recall what I said, but it looks like we're looking at a $300,000 to $500,000 surplus in that range.
Oh, wow.
So.
And to bring everybody up to date, and we kind of talked about it before, but Board of Finance has been obviously very interested in those estimates, and it's hard to look into that crystal ball. Hopefully, if we continue like that for another month and a half, the Board of Finance agreed for us to pick off some projects out of next year's operating capital, which will bring down our deficit from next year. And we can possibly fund the facility study on our own and get some of that stuff done. So we've been working very closely with them, and they're on board, and they're well aware of it. So that'll be, it'll be a good thing to get that stuff done and not go into next year with a deficit, so.
Thank you. I just have two other, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Pension committee met, and everything's looking good, just so we have it on record. So it's still trending well. Just two quick things. Just another reminder, the end-of-year celebrations. We have our end-of-year retiree celebration, district retirement. Everybody, all you folks are invited without charge. It's attachment deals on May 25. And then we have, here, June 6, we have Friend of Education, or June 5, before the board reading at 6 o'clock, we have Friend of Education Awards. At 6:30, we will be honoring our retirees. We'll have a little spread out as you walk in the library there. And our retirees will be our exemplary people that night. And one other, just quick update. At the last meeting, I presented the easement question from Autozone next door to us. I've had some conversations with the town, and we've learned that the, it's the legislative body of the town that has the authority to grant easements. So this will go to, I've passed it over to Bill Holtworth at the town, and he's gonna be working with P&amp;Z and Town Council and whatnot. I'm moving forward.
Are they looking for a recommendation from us?
I think before they have, you know, one of the comments I heard was, they've kind of put the cart in front of the horse here. They don't have plans. They don't have a lot of things really settled on that property yet, and they're asking for the easement. So I think P&amp;Z, Council, Bill, they would like to see some kind of draft plans before anything gets even considered.
I also spoke with Ken and Bill, and Bill was explaining to me the same thing. There's like six steps before they even, that they have to do with P&amp;Z and well-ins and all that packet, before they even get back to us. So they'll keep us up to date and include us in that, you know, down the road.
But they will get back to us and everything?
Yeah, we asked them to keep us up to date, so I'm sure, but there's the process that...
Do they need our permission to take part of our property?
It's gonna come back to us. We'll have to sort that out, yeah. But Bill told, or Bill told you that it's Town Council, right?
That, yeah. I think they would, they would seek our input. But they wouldn't be taking any property. They would just be looking to move a well closer than what is established to be able to move a well. Well's supposed to be at least 75 feet from the property line. Move it to about 25 feet. They wouldn't necessarily take any of our property, but it could impact, as we talked about last time, what we do in that easement area.
And I think, too, they're gonna look at it and see if there's any other locations for that well, too, so that the Board of Ed or the town won't be affected at all, too. That would be the ideal solution.
And I think there were two, I don't know what the, now defunct wells on that property already, that aren't in that area. So there could be, you know, I think there could be some other sources.
But they'll have to dig up the old ones and replace them.
Right.
Could be, yeah. That it? Okay. We have a couple of presentations?
We do. We have two short presentations. I'm gonna, bad out of order here, only because I was, we were having a little trouble with the ELA one, and I got it up, so it's kind of moving okay now. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to mess with it. I ran through it, so. This is just our last in the series of curriculum presentations that I've asked everyone to do. So we've heard from math, science, social studies, on kind of what our K-12 continuum looks like in each of those areas. And tonight, I've asked Kim Nelly and Mike Crowley to come talk about our English Language Arts curriculum, K-12.
Okay, so. So I'm going to start. Here we go, it is working. So our K-12 ELA presentation, we're going to start with writing for our youngest learners. So writing is taught through a workshop model with whole group instruction, followed by individual conferences and/or small groups based on student needs. Kindergarten is a very special place, for sure. Our littlest learners come in first telling stories orally and with pictures before they can ever write them on paper. And in order to get students writing on paper, we start with letter, you know, students need that letter formation practice before they can write those words and then sentences. So we do have that focus on letter sound identification and letter formation in kindergarten. And that focus then moves to writing words with more complex vowel patterns until students are writing two and even sometimes three-syllable words by the end of second grade. And the length of writing pieces grows from pictures only with no words to multiple pages of writing. Here, you see a second-grade student very proud of their work with what polar bears look like on that, on their slide there. So writing composition is built through interactive writing, shared writing, modeled texts, guided practice, and independent practice. And students compose a mix of writing, all narrative, informational, and opinion pieces throughout the year. K-2 students embark on in genres such as personal narrative, small moments, pattern books, research-based nonfiction, writing to make changes, book reviews. And then we go to 3rd through 5th grade. Again, we've got that workshop model with small groups based on student needs. And here, there's an even heavier focus on composition and the writing process from brainstorming through revision. Students compose a mix of, again, narrative, informational, opinion pieces. This 3rd through 5th graders write genres such as personal narrative, graphic novels, research writing on new and known topics, persuasive speeches, petitions, editorial, literary essays. And our work always reflects the students in front of us at any moment in time. So it's just important to know at this moment in time that our current 3rd through 5th graders were those students in kindergarten through 2nd grade in the March of 2020. So they did have that remote learning from March to June, and then that mix of hybrid instruction that next year. So this, we're just watching that cohort of students as they go through, as they learn differently, you know, than any of us ever had. So earlier this year, the 3rd through 5th grade teachers met and studied student writing to determine the greatest needs for this cohort at this point in time. And students analyzed student writing district-wide for various elements, including organization, elaboration, craft, grammar, punctuation. And after studying student writing, the consensus was that grammar and punctuation needed to have a refined, a refined focus at this time for these students. So we turned back to a resource we had piloted before the pandemic called Patterns of Power. This is an inquiry-based approach to instructional grammar. 6th grade teachers were using this resource with success. So we brought it down to the 3rd through 5th grade teachers as well, and we're looking forward to watching how students' writing grows with this approach to grammar and conventions. Also, in grade 3 through 5, students are developing vocabulary and spelling through Greek and Latin roots, which are the building blocks of the English language. And incorporating this study provides students with word meetings and supports in their spelling conventions as well. I think you all remember, we talked a little bit about early literacy back in November, so I'm not gonna get back into all of it. But as you recall, those early literacy skills are based on phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary comprehension, fluency, and oral language. When we talked about it back in November, we were talking about the waiver. In terms of that waiver, just a little update, the state has said that their goal is to give districts answers by July 1. So while we wait for the state, we have moved forward with our plans for providing students with quality literacy instruction. So as you remember, we use a workshop model in conjunction with targeted small groups to teach these skills. This picture shows some 2nd grade students working together in small groups, reading and researching topics together. So our students grow from letter sound identification to blending simple two- and three-letter words to reading more difficult words to decode along with building their bank of sight words. And all of this happens while their vocabulary and comprehension skills are built first through read-alouts, because students can comprehend at a higher level than they can decode at first. We also use shared reading for that purpose. And students build their skills by reading both fiction and nonfiction texts in both trade books and decodable texts. Decodable texts are those texts that have only the phonics skills that they've previously been taught, so it gives them an opportunity to practice that skill in a controlled way before heading off into a trade book. When students are reading fiction, they're working on things such as story elements, character study, predictions, retell, literal comprehension. When they're reading nonfiction, students are working on text features, identifying author's craft, building vocabulary. Then we move up to our 3rd through 5th grade readers, which builds on the skills learned in kindergarten through 2nd grade. The focus begins to lean heavier on comprehension as students are able to read and learn from more complex texts. Instruction continues to support that decoding and reading words through multi-syllabic words and instruction. Read-alouts continue to have a role in classroom instruction as teachers are able to model reading skills such as predictions, questioning, tracking character change, making inferences in order to build class conversations through those shared read-aloud texts, those shared experiences that they have. And students continue to read both fiction such as mystery, historical fiction, and nonfiction texts such as biography or all-about texts. Students engage in research clubs and read text sets on topics and study how the structure of text impacts how you read and learn from that text. And the goal of literacy instruction... Oh, dear. It's a beautiful picture. The goal of literacy instruction is for students to make meaning from those words and ultimately to enjoy reading. We want students to know that reading opens them to a world of stories and of knowledge. We want them to know they can turn to a book to enjoy or to learn about a topic they are interested in. So we just wanted to say thank you to our Board of Education for supporting our students in growing their interest in reading, both through your time spent in meetings such as these and giving your time to come into our classrooms to read to our students. We loved having you in our buildings for the celebration of reading, sharing your love of reading with the students, and helping bring that joy of reading to the students of Monroe. So thank you.
All right. Talk next about middle school, and as you all know, middle school is the great transition for us. And so we take all those great things that are being done in the elementary school, and we look forward to high school. And we start to make those changes for the students' instruction to get them ready for that secondary level of reading. So you're gonna see that specifically every year with our English Language Arts curriculum. What's important to note is the skills that we talk about in English Language Arts K-12, they just spiral. They talk about them as spiraling skills. They're really the same skills over and over again, taught with more and more complexity to aid in students' understanding. to aid in students' understanding and their analysis and their creativity of their own works. Um, in sixth grade, we really push notice and note, which is an annotation, um, program. Um, you see in the top right-hand corner, one of your teachers who are in the audience who's gonna speak to you a little while, that's Becky Capola, sixth grade class, and all the post-its that they wrote for, um, one of their book clubs that they had done, um, all the things that they were noticing in their own work. Um, we also, of course, have vocabulary instruction, um, integrated into all our English Language Arts classes. And really the goal of comprehension and analysis comes through almost on a daily basis. So in grade six, we use book clubs, and just, you know, define for you, book clubs are, surround a theme and they're curated books, and so students can make some choices. We have book club sizes of, you know, sometimes two kids, sometimes four kids, you know, we usually try not to get more than four kids in a book club. And it's what we do as adults, we read books, we talk about what we see in the book, we make relationships to our own lives in the books. And it really helps and it's, it's such a move that, you know, elementary's, you know, initiated, you know, probably twenty years ago, that idea. And that about ten years ago, we really brought it to that middle school and it has really enlivened the life of, um, middle school kids. Then in seventh grade, we continue with the book clubs, we have two different book clubs in seventh grade, there's the dystopian book, which I think might be their favorite one in all of middle schools, dystopian. And also contemporary book club, but we also bring in our first common text, like whole class novel. And about ten years ago, when I was in this position, we brought back The Outsiders, and we're like, hey, do we wanna bring back The Outsiders? They still love The Outsiders as much as we all love The Outsiders. They, um, it is, it is a huge hit, it doesn't stop being a hit with them, so that's, that's what we do in seventh grade as far as reading. Then in eighth grade, we have one book club experience, which is historical fiction, and then our two common texts are pretty classic in nature, and it's really about preparation for high school. So it's Call of the Wild and also our first, um, entree into Shakespeare with a Midsummer Night's Dream. Um, so we're really looking at the progression of students as far as readers, getting them ready for what's gonna happen up here at Massey. Um, in writing, we continue to use, um, Teachers College Writers Workshop. Um, when, with a focus on narrative and informational and argumentative, and you can see in each one of these grades, we have different units of study for the writing, um, some of the really great things that are happening, they, grade six students, they did, they did an informational, um, excuse me, book club. And then they do a workshop, uh, they make their own website, it's not a really published website, but you know, I'm sort of, like we were talking about that a few times ago, I think, about like that sort of fake website, about teen activism. Um, and there's some issues about like bullying or in the environment and what teens have done, so it's very informational. And they love that because they start to use technology in their writing. Um, and then that goes through in grade seven, I would say the highlight is really the companion book. I don't know if any of your kids, you know, they read Harry Potter and then they read the companion book that goes along with it and gives sort of like background information. They write one of those for one of the books they've read either independently or in a book club. Um, and then we really push in eighth grade that literary theme analysis, getting them ready for, um, the high school. And as you see on top, that Patterns of Power that was brought down to elementary, um, sixth grade had such success with it that we're pulling it into seventh and eighth grade also, because the way they teach, um, grammar and mechanics, um, is really powerful and it's like ten-minute bursts each day. And it reminds kids of what it looks like in a, um, what, what grammar mechanics should look like in, in, um, complex writing. All right, and that leads us to the high school, and really all those things on top, they really coalesce, um, with reading and writing, with definitely goals on analysis and research, you know, in the last few years, a big push into personal narrative. Um, a lot of what we were hearing about from colleges was that sort of I perspective is much more important now than it ever was. People are writing from a personal perspective, more so like, I remember when I first started teaching twenty years ago, we were like, oh no, you never say I, you always say the reader, da-da. And now they're saying, no, no, the I's okay, because the personal connection is what is actually, you know, most of what we read is personal narrative now. So that's where we're sort of moving also to teaching kids that, and also helps them with their college essays, so that's helpful. Um, so in grade nine, literature and composition, that class that every ninth grader takes, you know, The Odyssey, Romeo and Juliet, Lord of the Flies. Um, real deep dives into literary analysis with outside research. Um, in tenth grade, uh, some of you may have stood, been on the board at the time when I kept introducing new courses about a decade ago. And one of them was World Literature, a great course that in addition to, we do, uh, look at literature from Western Europe, we also have Central and South America, Africa, Asia, Middle East. Um, really invites much more of a cultural perspective. And when you look at our tenth grade social studies course of, uh, contemporary world issues, it ties so beautifully with that too. And that interdisciplinary helps the students understand, um, the cultural perspective so much more. In grade eleven, we continue with, um, the age-old American lit, uh, people reading Gatsby and Catcher in the Rye still remain important pieces. And they're in the culture and there's a, uh, we talk about cultural literacy, students really need to know what, what those things are about. They're still referred to often, I mean, kids love to come in and like show a, some, some reference to the scarlet letter still when they come back into school, like, oh, they made, they called somebody hestra print and I knew what they were talking about. Um, so that's always good. That's our first year for AP, there's only two AP English classes that exist in the world. And one of them is AP English Language, and that's our junior course, and then in senior year, you could take full-year courses in AP English Lit and Composition. Or you could also take the UConn Writing Through Literature course, those are two different courses. And then, you know, the world really opens up for seniors with these senior electives. Really, back when we started introducing these, this was, these were, all came out of a survey we did of students. And we said, what kind of things do you wanna read about, you know, horror literature was a really big thing, that's a course that we usually have three or four sections of a year. Um, we have a war literature class that has another three sections a year. Um, but in addition to that, we have our creative writing, our public communication. So students, um, get a lot of opportunities to sort of dive into that, sort of college-like courses by senior year. So if you look at like the K-12 perspective, um, a progression, excuse me, progression, like I said, we are still talking about the same thing over and over again, but with that complexity and with that hope that they go off to college and what our reports are from students is they're well-prepared for college, for English, you know. They read a lot, they, um, wrote a lot, they spoke a lot in class, and that's really, you know, sort of the pillars of our, uh, curriculum. And what we're working on since they're little babies to the ones who are going off to be seminal, so that's. So that's the big picture. What's up?
What, what, if I took AP English Lit, grade twelve, like, what would I expect to be reading?
Um, so it's interesting because they're reading, they read a lot of Toni Morrison, they read, you know, it's, it's more like a freshman course. So they're reading Toni Morrison, they read, oh my god, now you're getting back to me, um, like Antigone, um, they read, what else in that course? I wish I knew off the top of my head, get back to you about the exact ones on it. The thing about the AP Lit course too, just so you know, when you take the AP Lit exam, you could choose from any book that you've already read too. So a lot, a lot of what AP Lit also does is it's about prompting, it's about going back to, they'll do prompts about like Gatsby. Or they'll do prompts about, you know, Macbeth perhaps, um, but as far as, I'd have to ask Lori, what is right now in that curriculum as far as them? But I can definitely name those two I know are, are two of those, I mean, I think Lear has been in there, King Lear has been in there, but it may have, you know, switched a little bit last.
Got it.
So, um, for the parents and grandparents listening, no more notes to your kids in script about do your homework or make your bed, we don't do script, do we?
Yeah.
We actually, yes, well, we actually just talked about this again today. Um, students in grades three through five are exposed to cursive writing and do practice, at least being able to like sign their name and recognize that cursive is a thing in the world and this is a way that you might see handwriting come to you. Um, so that is something that students are exposed to. They're no longer writing like five pages, right, like doing all that in cursive, right?
The other thing about the I perspective, obviously when you're looking at schools, right, you're looking at the I and looking at your leadership skills. You have, and I forget, I beg your forgiveness, I forget her name, but writing on cultural diversity, um, do you remember her name? She was one of the, uh, potential, um, scholarship award winners who did this whole thing on culture. She came from out of country, enamored with Monroe and has just written a ton about how you can celebrate other people's, you know, diverse cultures. And she really exploded here, I can't remember her name, but, um, that's, that's impressive because, you know, when you look into college, it goes, what do you view though, right? So it's, uh, I think it's a great perspective to take. Thanks, thanks.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. So I'm really excited now to introduce, uh, Becky Capola and Jamie Crenwood, who's sixth grade teachers from Chalk Hill, I don't know who's gonna teach forever. Freudian slip. Freudian slip. So the reason why I said Chalk Hill.
Did you say Chalk Hill?
Because I was gonna go into, I don't know if anyone is familiar with Nature's Classroom.
I don't think anybody's familiar with Chalk Hill.
I am, hold on, hold on.
I know, I was waiting for you.
So Nature's Classroom is up, oh, I got kicked out.
You've gotta get permission, Joe, come on.
So Nature's Classroom was a long-running program that we did, it was kind of a culminating activity at Chalk Hill, for real. Uh, in sixth grade before Chalk Hill closed, actually, I think I was on one of the last Nature's classrooms as a dad chaperone, um, for my daughter. Uh, once Chalk Hill closed, it was kind of Bruce's thing and he did it, and you know, Bruce wasn't, you know, he was the assistant at Jackie Hollow and then he went to Stepney. Or then he went to, uh, I'm sorry, um, Sandy Hook and then over to Stepney. Uh, it's an awesome immersive experience, it's a, it's a multi-day program, um, just really exciting. I was really, I'll let, I'll let these two talk a little bit more about the actual program, but I was really excited that folks, you know, A, brought it up and then, you know, some of the feedback that Jamie and Becky have gotten from their sixth grade teammates, you know, the teachers, was very positive. Because it's a major commitment for teachers, because it's a, it's a three-day overnight or two nights, three days. Uh, and you're basically on for twenty-four hours and there's a whole bunch of science and outdoors fun activities, but it requires a lot of the staff. And I think it speaks highly of the staff and the caliber of people like Jamie and Becky that are interested in doing something like this and giving this opportunity to our kids. Technically, I don't think this field trip, so to speak, is necessarily needs board approval based on our policy. But I, it's a big one and it's, it's, it's a big thing, it's a, it's a big kind of resurrection to bring it back. And I just thought it was important that you all kind of hear about it, um, from these two, and any feedback that you have for us or any insight or thoughts, please feel free.
We're not used to sitting down and teaching, so this is gonna be hard. And we're very, and we're very loud, so.
You can stand at the board if you want.
It's okay, we're fine. Check everyone's screen as you walk around. Okay, right, we have a question for all of you. Um, what challenges do you think that early adolescents, middle schoolers face in this day and age? And you don't have to, we would ask you to turn and talk, but we won't do that. Just think in your head.
Trying to keep off their phone for three days.
Yes, there you go, there you go. Um, so we have observed as sixth grade teachers, um, that our students need a lot of practice or more practice than they've had in years past with socializing, sustaining their attention, especially off-screen, um, and learning in real-life situations because, um, you know, they just, they just need practice in that. Definitely. So, we're proposing this field trip to go back to Nature's Classroom with our sixth graders. And the needs being served by this proposed field trip is a learning setting that's free of routine distractions, social media, technology, no phones. Um, a novel environment to stimulate curiosity, which is gonna be our VAG competency next year, um, that's gonna be our school goal at Jackie Hollow. Um, an environment where students can build the skills of emotional intelligence to enhance our work with ruler, which we're gonna roll out to the students next year. And peer interdependence and team building, which we do a lot of at Jackie Hollow, um, in our teams, but I think it would be great in a different setting.
Jamie says VAG, it's Vision of the Graduate.
Vision of the Graduate, yep.
Okay, so, our proposed field trip is Nature's Classroom. Um, it would take place in Great Barrington, Massachusetts, as that could accommodate our STEM and our main campus, uh, students. Uh, we are looking at the dates of April tenth to the twelfth, and it would include our students, teachers and some parents. So how would Nature's Classroom help meet some of the needs of our students that Jamie just spoke to? Um, this is a sample of what the days would look like, so, um, obviously this can change and this is in the past, but the days are pretty jam-packed. Um, I actually attended, uh, Nature's Classroom in, I think, two thousand and five at Chalk Hill. Um, so, uh, it was non-stop, all day, the kids wake up in the morning, they're working together, they're meal prepping, they're doing fieldwork and ropes courses. They're taking classes that they can choose from, and they're really experiencing this authentic learning that we spoke to. Um, building their curiosity, working together and staying off their technology. Maybe getting a little hurt here and there, you know, in a safe way, but they're really exploring and it provides a great opportunity for the students. Um, some of those field groups and class options, um, the field group, uh, is based on team building. Um, there's ropes courses and things like that, and then they have some really amazing classes, these are just samples that they've done in the past. Um, so you can see just by looking at them, there's the science-y ones and outdoors and a lot of opportunities that our students are not getting um, on a daily basis as much as they have in the past. Um, and then for those students whose families might prefer for them to not go away, um, they offer a nature on wheels, they call it now, uh, program in which they can cater to and customize a program that they would bring to us right at Jackie Hollow. So the students could go, uh, to the campus and they would bring them the nature on wheels there and they'd be able to have similar experiences, um, right there at Jackie Hollow.
And we already have a colleague come on to stay back.
Oh, yes, we have a colleague volunteered for that.
Are we ready in Class A Rapids?
Are you gonna chaperone that? And then, do you wanna close up, do you?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we wanted to get some pe- feedback from, uh, former teachers and a student, Haley Cobza, um, that attended. Um, but we thought what Amer- Amanda Morrison said, she's our chorus director, um, she said Nature's Classroom is the greatest week of school. And I think we got this from almost everybody, I, everybody that went, even the person that said that they would stay behind was like, it's not, I loved it, I'm just not there yet anymore. I went for many, many years and would happily volunteer to go again, I especially love watching the students learn self-reliance skills as they navigate their stay in the woods. It's not really woods, but, there's woods, but they're not camping. I also like how the program teaches kids how to care for others by setting up and cleaning up meals as well as dining together. And Haley said Nature's Classroom was a unique experience, it was a great opportunity to get hands-on learning, bond with my classmates, particularly those I didn't have classes with, which is special for them.
So on that note, does anyone have any questions for our proposed Nature's?
Or for Julia.
Since this is a mini-survivor, how many people attritioned out?
Depends, no, I'm just kidding.
This does, I think this offers a great opportunity for our kids, we talk about Vision of the Graduate, so many of those competencies get hit in this. We, we talk about curiosity, which is gonna be a focus at Jackie Hollow and, and the whole district next year, but, you know, critical thinking and problem solving, communication. All these team building activities that they do, the hands-on science stuff, and really giving our kids a chance to just unplug and be with each other, I think is, is so valuable. And, you know, I think back in the day, just to give folks an idea, I would say probably seventy-five to eighty-five percent of the class attended Nature's Classroom.
Easily. The I chaperoned it for four years and I, I think it was eighty percent my last year I went. Honestly, for those of you who have no idea what this is, when you watch them show up and then as they're sleeping on the way back to Monroe, you really know it was a great experience, because they are just wiped out. And, and for me, it was a great experience, you've learned them in a whole other way.
They do an open fire cooking, that, you know, basically.
There's a dining hall there, they offer like the campfire experience, but not on the open fire cooking, no, not that I experienced.
I, I didn't, I never did, no.
They do a big thing with the kids on, uh, the ORP report is what it's called, the, basically on food, uh, you know, food waste and things like that. And they would measure how much, you know, from the first day, the first meal that the kids ate, how much waste did they have? You had, you had eighteen pounds of waste in this group, let's eat that tomorrow, and every day trying to get it down. It's just, it teaches them a lot of things that they, they, they.
I didn't see on there, but I'm sure it's part of it, um, since they're used to touching everything, um, basically phones. What about poison ivy and all that training up there, is that a possibility?
So there, yes, yes, for outdoors, so, um, there's a first aid station and a nurse there and all that too, so if anything ever did happen, you know, yep.
When was the last time Monroe went on this?
We were thinking when Chalk Hill closed.
I would, I would think it was Chalk Hill too, to be honest with you.
I think, I, my daughter was, uh, my oldest was in sixth grade and then that was the last year when it was a five-six school. So then it was the next year after that, so I think it was like two thousand and eleven, you were thinking?
What's the student to staff ratio on this?
One to ten.
And you'll have like?
It's one to ten with chaperones and then they provide the teaching staff. So the people leading the ropes course and the field group activities are staff from there. We travel with one to ten from chaperones, so the student ratio probably is one to seven.
Yeah, it's a good ratio.
Of all adults, yeah, it's.
So Jerry, how fast did they put out your coconut? No, sorry.
If it's set up similar to the way it was, probably Jeremy, you and I went, there was like, there was a cabin, half the kids go in one half the cabin, half the kids go in the other half the cabin and then the two adults. There's usually, we never have one adult with kids, we have two adults and they sleep in the, in the middle part.
Any other questions? I like it. I'm eager to see it get going again. It's nice to see all these things coming back and to get going again. We're going to move forward. We have no unfinished business and so we're going to move to new business. I know Joe's been very nervous about this. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract commencing July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2026? Justin, second, Jeff, I'd like to start the comments. Joe, you and I will set a date. The board met in executive session, went through performance evaluations. So we'll set a date to sit down and talk about that. But overall, you're doing a great job and keep up the good work. And we got a couple of to-dos for you, but nothing major. And, and just overall, thank you very much for, for all your hard work and your staff's work. Thank you. Anyone else comments?
Yeah, we were trying to extend it more, but we couldn't.
Thank you. Is that it for comments? Okay, all in favor? I unanimous, thank you very much. Mr. Stevens, what say ye?
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn since I missed it last month.
You did, we didn't know what to do. We sat here for hours. Can I have a second, please? Jeff, any discussion? Shocking. All in favor? I unanimous, good night, everybody.